Good evening. It's the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, October 17th, 2022, 5:45 PM. Called the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We are going to start with open forum. Veterans Agent Chris Buckley here with us this evening. So, Chris, welcome.
How is everybody doing this evening?
He's good.
Coming with our, you know, veterans time, Veterans Day, part of the year. Got a few things going on. We've got Field of Flags that will be the 29th over on the common. We'll have our veterans luncheon on Veterans Day at noon over at the COA. So, any veterans can go ahead and sign up for that in advance. Looking forward to having everybody back in person. And then our tri-town parade is in West Bridgewater this year. The theme is 200 years of honoring our veterans. Put that out there so we can come up with something better next year. Our 200. And also, one change on that, we usually stage on Brewster Road. It's gonna be Hart's Horn Road, which is just the road just to the south off of North Elm. And then it will wrap up at the gazebo and probably be a little bit bigger of a ceremony due to it being 200 years for West Bridgewater. Outside of that, we are just dealing with a lot of [inaudible] packed act, a lot of questions, a lot of veterans that normally wouldn't walk in the office or call are calling now. And just want to advise everybody before they do anything with a lawyer or before they do anything on their own, just give the office a call just so we can give them, you know, point them in the right direction and make sure they're not, you know, doing something that's gonna, you know, affect them down the road. Other than that, Peter, are you gonna be speaking at the tri-town?
Yeah. What was the date again?
It's gonna be November 11th, Friday.
Should be fine. I don't see anything, any problem with that. I was asked to speak at the flag, Field of Flags. Unfortunately, I don't know if we're gonna be around, so.
I'll be there. You want me to do it?
Would love for you to do it.
The vice chair is happy to step up.
All right, great. Now, that's the 29th.
Yep.
You can make sure you're on time.
Luckily, it doesn't kick off with that.
Thank you very much, Carol.
Sure.
But, yeah, that should be, I'll let you know, but I don't think I have any conflicts on that date, for sure. But, and then what, the parade is in West Bridgewater this year?
Yeah, it's gonna be West Bridgewater. It's gonna stage at 9:00 AM, kickoff at 10:00 AM. Usually goes from North Elm over on to 28, a little horseshoe around town. And ceremonies will kick off, like I said, right around 11 o'clock.
Cool, great.
And then.
We next year?
And then we'll be next year and.
Cool.
Yeah. Like I said, we're looking forward to it, taking a lot of notes, a lot of behind the scenes planning already, so looking forward to it.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you very much. And, like I said, anything we can do for you as a board or individually?
No, we're all set. Are there any questions from you guys? I'm good.
I'm all good.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, anybody else? Chief, you're all set?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll close open forum. Mr. Clark, bring us into.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, 38, Paragraph 10, 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective bargaining sessions, our contract negotiations with non-union personnel, firefighter superior officers, clerical DPW dispatches patrol officers, and also pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. As the chair has determined that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's litigating position in a matter involving Riddafarm versus the town of East Bridgewater, who will vote to adjourn to executive session and return to open session after that.
Second.
All right, Peter Spigot, Chair.
Dave Shady, aye.
Carol Julius, aye.
All right, so we'll cut it out and we'll be back.
Can I step up and tell another one in?
No.
All right, welcome back to the Selectmen's meeting, October 17th, 2022. Can I get a motion to reopen the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appointments. Start with Emily Oliver. She's gonna come talk about the annual food drive we have coming, coming up. So. Emily and myself go way back.
Way back.
Way back. So, Emily, I'm gonna have you just talk a little bit about the food bank itself and the needs and, you know, where you kind of briefly give the board as well as people listening an idea of what you guys do over there. And I'll expand a little bit about our drive.
Fabulous. My name's Emily Oliver, and I'm the co-director of the East Bridgewater Emergency Food Pantry up at the Union Congregational Church. The food pantry is a mission of the church, and we've supported it since 1987. It's housed at 105 Pleasant Street. If anyone wants to find us, they can always call us. So, what we, our mission is to serve the people of East Bridgewater, but we will serve anyone who comes to our door. We give out enough, our goal is to give out enough food for three days. But typically, our food we give out is much more than that. They get three proteins, they get eggs, eggs, butter, and milk, and coffee every distribution. We have two distributions a month. We receive food once a month from the Greater Boston Food Bank. And then we also purchase food. So, that's one reason the food drive is so important to us is because it's hard for us to maintain our levels of purchasing without donations. And this town has always been fabulously supportive of us, and I really appreciate that. Doesn't matter whether it's the Board of Health food drive in the past, or the schools, or there's been fraternities and BSU that have helped us, the Boy Scouts, everyone helps us. And we're, the commercial club, we're very, very appreciative. So, I wanna say thank you, first of all, for that support for us. Basically, let me tell you that I move about 12, at least 1,200 pounds of food every month. In the past three months, I've serviced 40, an average 43 families and serviced about 397 individuals. Okay? So, what your donations do through the food drive is allows us to have those dry goods that we don't have to purchase. That way, we can focus our monies on proteins and fruits and vegetables because we try to always give those out. So, canned goods that we get between Thanksgiving and Christmas actually will last us till about March. We can really stretch it out. We have lots of storage, and if I don't store, I put under tables. You'll come into our church and you'll see food everywhere downstairs after Christmas. So, we have lots of help to do that. We have a big core of volunteers who help us do it. And we appreciate all their help, including the students of East Bridgewater. So, I'm not sure what else you want to hear about us.
Great. No, they do a wonderful job. We have two food banks. St. John's has one as well. And a little history behind both of them. Again, about 10 years ago, this was brought up to me through the Central School had wanted to put a food drive together. So, what we thought would be, you know, a nice little drive through the Board of Health as well as some educational aspect, we did a few times, we did a healthy food drive. So, we put items on there that necessarily will maybe a little bit more healthier than some of the stuff in the past. And the other thing was, is a lot of these items, and it's probably the same now, Emily, is a lot of the items that come in are, in the old days, were like your canned peas and, you know, kidney beans. It's like, I don't really need this, so let's bring it there.
Canned pumpkin.
Right, yes. And I was told, you know, geez, you know, what we really need is, you know, these like paper towels and, you know, this and toilet paper, things of that nature. So, we really dedicated a list to the needs of both food pantries. And to our pleasant surprise, it was really successful. We had a, we've had a really good run with it. The Central School, high school jumped on a couple of years ago with us and started doing it. But as it was the 10th year, I called Emily, as I usually do, and said, listen, I've got an idea here. Let's, you know, for the 10th, let's really make it a larger event where we're not only the three schools, but we reached out to the East Bridgewater Police, the Fire, DPW, and Rebecca, we spoke. You know, she's gonna help here in Town Hall and through my insurance agency, we'll do some businesses. So, we're really hoping to get a real, real good push to push them through the holidays. And we'll go back to the same thing where it will be a contest in some of the schools with them, let them figure out what they wanna do. But I've got a brief flyer which you got, you'll be getting this week. For you guys as well. I got one here for you guys as well. And basically, like I said, it's the same concept. It's just basically what we're, the only thing we're really changing is the amount of participation we have. You know, like even speaking to John Haynes from the DPW, they're going to coordinate the trucks to help the delivery. We had the box truck a few times, but as it grew, it got a little tougher for me and John over there to stop at each place and try to do it. So, we're gonna get some help in that area. The flyer was done by Jen Farrell at my office, did a really nice job, has done it in the past. So, we've got a lot of coordination with this, and I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be great. I think we're really gonna see, yeah, success. And we've seen a lot in the things.
We have. We usually get about 1,500 pounds from this one drive, and it's very, very helpful for us. It takes a lot of people to move it into our building. And then what happens after it comes is we have to date it to make sure we're not giving out anything expired because people do have a tendency to kind of give me what's at the back of their cabinet.
Yeah.
It's okay. I'll take it. And then we have to store it, and then we have to redistribute it again on one of those days. We do give it away. So, it takes a community to get it done.
Absolutely.
Have you thought about getting the Y and say we're involved?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get the flyers out. So, we got about a month before the actual drive. The 14th, I think, is through the 18th.
14th.
Yeah, so that's central. We usually coordinated around Central Schools, their parent teacher conferences because they come in and, believe it or not, we'll see how the middle, the high school wasn't as competitive. Those Central School kids.
Central School kids have a really, they take it very seriously, and their point system is they're very cut.
Oh, yeah. We have pallets. I mean, I remember the gentleman that worked for a soap company, and he brought in pallets of soap.
Yes, yep.
Oh, boy, yeah. And I think it was like, you know, they win like a pajama day or something. But it's just the idea of.
I'd love that stuff.
Are you doing that at Town Hall, too?
Yeah.
Pajama day at Town Hall.
Absolutely.
At least the department will take you there.
Absolutely, yeah. So, we're looking for, and I just wanted to kind of get, bring it out to the, a little bit more public this year. Again, I appreciate both St. John's and everything you guys do for the community. You work really hard, and I'll let Carol, if you got.
Yeah, I know Kiwanis donates monthly, but I can still help spread the word with them for this. And then I'm also thinking maybe there's a way to get the bus drivers involved with the kids as they see the kids bringing on. Maybe the bus drivers could have their own little competition.
Yeah, everybody, anyone that can.
And Lucini, maybe Lucini would like to help.
Yeah, because the Y, I know, ran a couple of these during the pandemic.
Yep.
Had a couple of food drives.
So important.
Get it out to them. They're huge down there.
And especially those three-point items because if you, you know, have SNAP benefits, you can't buy a lot of those things. You can't buy toothpaste. You can't buy paper towels. You know, you can buy canned pumpkin, should you want it.
And there's supply chain issues everywhere, and there's staffing shortage everywhere. We're finding that with the food bank, we're unable to get as many products. And then it's harder to find the products that you do want.
Yep.
It's just harder all around. So, we're always appreciative of whatever.
Well, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. I appreciate your guys' work. Thank you.
We'll be in touch. We've got another appointment, but not till 6:30, so, Mr. Clark, you wanna throw a couple of action items out here? Some layups for us, I guess?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 26, 22, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve but not release minutes of the September 26, 2022, Board of Selectmen's Executive Session meeting.
Second.
Motion's made second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we settle the agreement with Riddafarm and Town of East Bridgewater concerning our settlement agreements for the release of claims that was just refiled this year.
Second.
We just approved it in the executive session.
Mm-hmm. Yep, motion made second. Charlie, you have anything to add here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, vote to approve the sale of 1,087,949 dollars. 5% of the general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes of the town dated October 28, 2022, and payable April 28, 2023, to Piper Sandler, Inc., company at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $6,308.01 as printed.
Second. You don't have to read all that?
Shut up. No, the chairman said I don't.
Did not say that, actually. Motion's made second. Discussion?
Charlie?
No. So, back in July, we issued an initial ban for several of the projects that were approved at town meeting in May. Also approved $500,000 for engineering to do with the sanitary sewer district, the North Bedford Street. We've only did it for three months because there was possibility that we would do a permanent bond for the sanitary district around this time. But we're still working on development agreements with the major landowners and such. So, we've, basically, we're rolling over this ban with slightly more money in it than we did three months ago. And this will go to extend six months to April of 2023. And we'll have a much better idea because our hope is that we'll go on out to bid for construction. Bids in, we'll have a much better idea in April of '23 what we'll need to do for either one additional ban or to roll this over into a long-term bond.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Good. All right. Motion's made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to sign Amendment Guarantee of Understanding the Superior Office Association.
Second.
So, we were in contract negotiations, Superior Officers or the Sergeants for the Police Department. We did a three-year contract with them. We did some restructuring of their salary schedules. This includes a 1% increase for fiscal '24 for across-the-board wage increases, and then a 2% increase in fiscal '25 with some other items in the agreement for changes. But if approved at town meeting, if we, we'll need about $45,000 to fund the agreement in fiscal '23. If it's approved at town meeting, we'll have a three-year agreement. It'll be all set.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion that we process the proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month present to, present to Heather Monacini.
Monacucci, I'm right here.
Thank you.
Second.
You wanna come on up real quick?
Am I allowed to videotape this as you read it?
It's public.
So, it's being taped right now, so you can watch it right on.
Okay.
You and the thousands and thousands of other people that watch this.
Is it ratings week?
There you go. I think it is.
Writing week?
It's ratings week.
Ratings week.
Please. All kidding aside, Heather, this is great. Wanna give us a little update of what?
Yes, absolutely. So, this is, was started by a woman out in California. She started One Mom's Battle, and we are just raising awareness for family court as well as just protecting children from abusive situations. So, yeah, this is just, the month of November will be kind of a big campaign for family court awareness.
Great. If there's anything else this board or department can do, you certainly just let us, let us know.
Yeah.
We're more than happy to participate or.
I appreciate it so much.
Absolutely.
Me, too.
Appreciate what you're doing.
All right, motion's been made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you got it.
Can you read that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Proclamation, Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas the purpose of Family Court Awareness Month is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes children's safety and acts in the best interest of the children. And whereas it is important to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, child abuse, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the court, within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the organization such as Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs in services that are proven to terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value, as well as educate judge, judges, the other family court professionals on the evidence-based, peer-reviewed research, as such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. Now, and therefore, we, the East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen, hereby proclaim November 2022 as Family Court Awareness Month. Thank you. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol. You, too. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Back to Emily.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Scott Turner, it's here from the Environment Department. Stormwater regulations.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, Scott, how you doing, bud?
Good.
Good.
How you doing?
Good, good, good. So, Scott Turner with Environment Department has been working with the town of East Bridgewater now for, oh, close to a year now?
Over a year.
Over a year, yeah. So, I've been doing some really good work with track meetings in the departments, you know, working along with conservation, building, and planning. So, he's seen a lot, I'm sure, in the last year or so that we've thrown at him. And this is a great step forward with the stormwater regulations. We thought it'd be good to have him come in and just give the board a brief review of what we're actually talking about and what we wanna move forward with.
All right. So, I do have a presentation. Looks like Charlie's working on it. But just to kind of give you an overview, so, and just a little bit about my background. So, I'm a registered civil engineer. I'm also a certified planner. And most of my work is either in land development or stormwater management. So, I'm gonna apologize in advance if I use acronyms or terminology that is commonplace to me, but I also understand that not everybody is dealing with stormwater like I am. So, if you have a question, feel free to stop and ask a question.
We'll just put you on hold and Google it.
There you go. There you go. So, the stormwater permit that we're going to talk about, it's referred to as the MS4 permit. And what MS4 stands for. Yep.
Up this to James' last.
Okay, terrific. So, MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. And what that means is it's basically your stormwater system. And it's the, it's the town's or municipality's municipal system. So, that includes your roads, your town-owned roads, and also your town-owned facilities. It does not include state-owned roads. It does not include private facilities. In 2018, the EPA passed a new MS4 permit for Massachusetts, and every state has one. The goal of the permit, the overall goal of the permit, is to really focus towns on preparing or getting their act together regarding stormwater. So, traditionally, in Massachusetts, stormwater is not, is not paid attention to like in other states. In states like California or Arizona, where they don't have a whole lot of water, it, regulations are much more strict because they tend to collect it, reuse it for irrigation, those types of things. In Massachusetts, we're very water-rich, so stormwater is not necessarily the highest priority. It's across the board. We have 25 clients that we do MS4 work for. And across the board, it is always one of the lower priorities. The priorities are always plowing, water systems, you know, sewer systems, those types of things. So, this permit is put in place to try to get towns to really focus on it holistically at the town level. And so, the intent is that not just your Public Works Department, but your Board of Health, Planning Board, Planning Department, all the different boards have a say in it. And all the deliverables are intended to be signed by the town administrator to make sure that every town is paying adequate attention consistent with the requirements of the stormwater permit. The most recent one went into effect in 2018, and it's in effect until 2028. Oops, sorry. There are generally six requirements, which are called minimum control measures, that you need to pay attention to annually. They regard public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, which is basically making sure that you don't have non-stormwater connections to your sewer system. And the easiest way to explain that is make sure a house doesn't have a sewer system, have their sewer system connected to a stormwater system. Construction site stormwater runoff control, which is basically making sure that when you have a new construction site, you have erosion and sedimentation controls in place. New development and redevelopment, which is basically what we're here to talk mostly about today, but that's how you regulate new projects that come in front of planning boards or conservation commissions, Board of Health, and so on and so forth. And good housekeeping and pollution prevention, which basically requires towns to manage their stormwater management systems, clean them, clean catch basins, sweep streets, do the same thing for parks, and, you know, municipal facilities like this building and this site here. And then there are some additional requirements for towns that have what they call impaired waters or waters that have been described as having an impairment for something. So, common. So common impairments like phosphorus or nitrogen. If you drive by a pond in the fall, a lot of times you may see a pond that has a lot of algae in it. It might be green, might smell kind of funny. That's because it's impaired. And so there were a lot of changes. The original permit was passed in 2003. The 2018 permit has a lot of additional changes to it, things like making additional mapping, additional sampling, doing investigations of all your systems, requiring additional sediment and erosion controls, additional requirements for new development and redevelopment sites. So they want you to have a higher level of treating your stormwater and managing it on new construction and redevelopment sites, requiring different types of management systems, known as green infrastructure or low-impact development systems, and then also requirements regarding good housekeeping in terms of your operations and maintenance. But the biggest concern, or the biggest change, is that they're being, EPA is starting to do audits and also starting to enforce the requirements of the permit. And we've had clients who have been audited, and basically what happens is EPA comes in and they evaluate your entire system, and they can find you. That is not their intent. They want you to comply, but they make it known that finding you is definitely a tool that they have. One of the things that they require you to do is to have a stormwater bylaw in place, and the stormwater bylaw was passed by at town meeting in the spring. And Charlie sent me an email today saying that it was approved by the Attorney General in August. And so what I'm here to talk to you about now is regulations to accompany that. I want to go through these slides here, talk about what the bylaw requirements are, and these are all things that are included in your bylaw. They regulate the illicit discharge detection and elimination program, which is basically preventing non-stormwater discharges from entering your stormwater system. The construction site stormwater runoff, which requires the Evan Ordnance or Regulatory Mechanism for, requiring folks to implement erosion and sedimentation controls. And then also additional requirements for new development and redevelopment, which is things I mentioned to before, like the low-impact development site planning, compliance, and in some cases exceed the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, treating for things like phosphorus and nitrogen, enhanced infiltration requirements, those types of things. And so to accompany the bylaw, Charlie and Peter had asked me to take a crack at drafting some regulations, and that's what I've done. I believe you have copies of them in front of you. I'm not sure how closely you've read them. For somebody like me, they're super exciting. For someone, for most people, probably put you to sleep. But these are some of the things that we wrote into your regulations, and I'm just going to go quickly through it, rather than going through step-by-step what's in the regulations, and I have a copy of them here. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But I worked on these, a little bit with the track committee, but also with John Haynes. And so in Section 4, we designated, or these regulations designate John, Director of Public Works, as the authority's agent. This board, the Board of Selectmen, are the stormwater permitting authority. Section 5 makes issuance of a stormwater independent of other approvals. In some towns, and in previous, a previous iteration of these regulations, they were tied to other approvals, such as a site plan approval or a notice of intent under a conservation commission. One of the things that we've discussed and worked into the permit was that, or into these regulations, was the issuance of stormwater management permits. And we made accommodations for administrative and general permits, and the difference between the administrative and the general permits are basically the administrative permits can be issued administratively by your folks, the authority, or your agent, which would be John. There are two types of administrative permits, those that apply to construction activities that are between 10,000 square feet and less than one acre. So an acre is 43,560 square feet. But basically, if you have a smaller project, John would be able to issue a permit administratively. The other allowance we made for administrative permits is for residential lots that have been created through the definitive subdivision process. So if a project goes through the definitive subdivision process through the planning board, and a stormwater permit is issued for the entire subdivision, say it's 10 lots, what we don't want to have happen is have each individual lot come back for a general permit, even though, even if they trigger the 43,560 square feet of disturbance. And the reason for that is because the subdivision has gone through it, has gone through that process already. The reason we want to go through an administrative permit is because sometimes a stormwater management system includes elements on individual lots that need to be maintained. So this permit allows that each individual lot will contain whatever elements there may be that were associated with that larger general permit associated with the subdivision. Just kind of a check and balances to make sure that the overall subdivision is built right.
You might have swills, you might have retention or detention bases, things like that.
That's right. You might have roof drains that collect stormwater and that are accounted for in the design. And then there's a general permit that applies to all projects, whether they be definitive subdivisions, or site plan approvals, or even projects that may not trigger a site plan review. I'm not sure what those would be, that you have to go for a notice of intent under the Conservation Commission. But basically, anything greater than one acre of disturbance would require a general permit. And the difference between the general and the administrative is that the requirements for submitting the permit are much higher in terms of what you submit for backup, for plans, for backup calculations, and so on and so forth. We have, in the regulations, in Section 6E, there are some fees that were, that I proposed, and like I said, John has reviewed. They're just administrative fees by the size of the project. These are up for discussion, I suppose, as is everything in this draft permit that we submitted. But basically, your fees, your administrative fees would range anywhere from $100 to $2,500, depending on the size of your, size of the project. If you have issued a stormwater permit and then the project changes, there are requirements in there, or allowances in there for folks to come back. Basically, if they're changing some of the stormwater management practices, or if the project changes by 25%, they would have to come back. Requires as-built plans to be submitted for both administrative and general permits, which is a requirement of the MS-4 permit. And also provides for low-impact design standards used to the maximum extent practicable, which is a requirement under the MS-4 permit. It also includes design criteria that exceeds the state standards but is consistent with the MS-4 permit. That is, one of the inconsistencies in the permit is that the MS-4 permit has greater requirements than the state standards. The board, which is you, can issue waivers for any design requirements. There are construction inspection requirements, and as part of your, part of the information that I sent to Charlie, there's a form for doing construction inspections. There are allowances for applicants to provide surety, to make sure that the stormwater management system is built as designed and approved, ongoing maintenance requirements in perpetuity. Stormwater systems don't work unless they're maintained, and a lot of times, systems get built and are not maintained. So there are requirements that require homeowners or property owners to maintain their systems. And then there's also an enforcement mechanism. So I know that's a lot of stuff, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions. I went really, really quick and didn't really get into a lot of items, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. So John, do you mind coming up for a quick second? So just so the board knows, I've been able to go to some of the, keep going back to the track committees because, you know, they've obviously got together, you know, for the conservation and Board of Health and planning and zoning and all those. So everybody in, obviously, in John's direction. So not the issue, but I think that the goal that we're trying to do is really determine a real plan for our stormwater. You know, we've seen it switch around between planning and conservation, and, you know, there was some misdirection and really not a lot of transparency with what one person come in versus another person. So our goal, and when I say ours, I'm really talking about our departments, because that's really who did all this and put this together, and they're meeting on Wednesday. So they would probably have more discussion regarding, you know, what's in this bylaw and what they feel would be good, bad, indifferent, whatever it may be. So it will come back to us. You know, I don't think we're asking for a vote right now. We're just looking to get the board's understanding of what the purpose is and what we're trying to solve. But, you know, John can speak a little bit on, you know, again, what I was saying, some of that transparency and some where he thinks this will, you know, bring the town.
And I think this all actually melds itself into what was the intent and the vision when the town went and solicited the idea of utilizing a larger consulting engineer that could look at our projects from, you know, a comprehensive, over, you know, single vision, look at all of the requirements, permitting from stormwater site plan, conservation issues, things like that. And this dovetails into that as well, because it essentially acknowledges the role of MS-4 and its role within our community, and how it impacts, again, and Scott has, you know, extensive expertise in this. I mean, he kind of, he didn't really expand on the bevy of knowledge.
We know he's smart.
What we rely him on. Yeah, he's a smart guy. And so I think you're, the board looking out and utilizing and looking at their expertise and said, how can we best develop the rules and regulations that were integral to the amendments that were made to our stormwater bylaw at the annual town meeting? And as we discussed it, and when Scott kind of presented, because of the fact that they do work with 25 other communities, and they kind of know what works in those other communities, and when he, you know, approached me that, you know, in most communities, the place where this lies best is Public Works, because we have that structure in place. One of the things that we really didn't, that I didn't want to see, the track committee doesn't want to see, the town as a whole did not want to see, was that we try to implement another restrictive, overly restrictive, you know, permit requirements and things like that. And really, and Scott touched on it briefly, but the MS-4 permit is a permit that is overarching throughout the entire community. It's specifically related to our public ways, our public packs. But where the disconnect had been was that these new subdivisions, development, and things eventually all connect into our public ways. They all have an impact. So we need to look at that, and there's nothing in the work that's been done here that is creating a more restrictive or anything that says, well, you know, this is any different than you may see in another community or whatnot. Developers should be familiar with it. They're already familiar with coming to DPW. They come to DPW already for trench permits, water, sewer connections, all of those things. And what this will allow is, again, for that efficiency to be in place, the structure's there. We're already out about, you know, doing inspections and things like that. And so we can, we'll be able to hopefully efficiently dovetail it into, you know, our regular inspection process and things like that. And then again, try to find efficiencies and better services that the town can continue to provide, is our hope, so we can make the projects smoother. But we also, we're out and about.
Right.
So, you know, it may be that there's a scheduled inspection for our stormwater and a portion of that next Tuesday. But it also may be that, you know, I just happened to be driving down the street on the Friday before, and, you know, per the authority of the Board of Public Works Commission adds the Stormwater Authority designating it to DPW, and just swing in and see how their project's going. You know, it'll allow us to build on relationships we already have, and I think, again, find some efficiencies.
Well, it's talk and shop too, right? So when it falls back on some of the boards that only meet temporarily, maybe they don't have the knowledge or the understanding of the people that you're working with, because it's two or three individuals that this most affects, and it doesn't really affect anyone until it affects somebody, right? Not, too many people are like, oh, stormwater, this is, you know, bylaw, I really want to know, you know, what's going on and how it works, so.
And to that point, where the staff that's out there, while the work's actually being done, obviously, these other boards and committees are trying to do this work as volunteers in the evening. So there's no work really being done right now.
Right.
So it's the seven to four that we're out there, that the majority of that work is actually taking place. So again, hopefully, we ought not only bring ourself into those next steps of compliance and this and that, but we also find efficiencies, is the long-range hope here.
And again, this will be discussed in further detail with those boards and some of the people on them on Wednesday. So I'm sure we'll get some feedback from different individuals regarding what they care for, what they don't care for. But I think at the end, you know, the common goal is being met here with what we've put forth. So Scott, I appreciate the work you've put in and continue to put in. You know, Environmental Partners has been one of the successes, big successes we've had upstairs on the second floor. I think John would say the same thing, you know, it's really helped us to push our agenda forward. So I appreciate all the work you've put in.
Thank you.
Guys, you have any questions?
No, I just want to, and again, I think it was a great presentation, Scott, even though I didn't understand a lot of it. You know, what it's doing is bringing that town together, something that's been talked about, John and I have talked about this over the, these things have been talked about for 100 years. Now, all of a sudden, you know, with the presentation from basically the three, now we understand what's been going on up there for the last year, and this is just a portion of what's come out of it. But you're right, it's bringing all these departments and boards here, 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 and there, all into the mix. It just makes everyone's job overall, they know what each other's doing, and it's just going to make everyone's job easier, and it's going to make it easier for the public. Again, I just think it's great.
Yeah, exactly. You know, people can't follow the rules if they don't know what the rules are. And this way, everybody knows, and, you know, there's no question about it, and it gives you the ability to be out there in the field and see what's going on. So I think it's great. Like David, I didn't understand what most of it means, but I'm glad we hire smart people who do.
Great. That's, I mean, we'll, see you Wednesday, and barring any issues there, which I don't foresee, we'll get to sign off on it in our next meeting.
Terrific. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to talk stormwater with you if you like.
Explain what it is. Stormwater 101.
That's right.
Just bring an interpreter.
All right. All right, we're a little bit behind for our, so a public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, notice is hereby given that pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts Terminal Law, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held relative to the application of a new license, general on-premises, annual, all-alcoholic, for Elizabeth Wilson, doing business at Pony Town Potties, Homestead Harvest. Elizabeth Wilson, manager, premises 1194 Plymouth Street, East Bridgewater. Public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room, 175 Central, East Bridgewater, on Monday, October 17th, at 20, October 17, 2022, at 6:45. It is 6:55 now.
Okay. Oh, I thought you said something.
Nope.
All right, do we have? Oh, all right. I want to make sure, I don't want to call the wrong person. You are Elizabeth, I'm assuming? All right, Elizabeth, come on up.
Hi, Liz.
Hello. Sorry, I'm nervous.
First, let me stop by saying I brought my child over this summer and had to bring her back, you know, for another time, so that's good news. You've done really well, nice job over there.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm trying.
I'm a frequent flyer.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I was going to bring some cheese to bribe her. I figured that wasn't appropriate.
As long as it's worth less than $25, it's okay.
I'll slip one to Mr. Dale.
So why don't you give us a little background of, you know, where you guys started and where you're at and what you're looking for and kind of.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm in a good place. We're definitely growing. I started originally doing like seasonal birthday parties there. Then I built the barn in 2019, kind of gained more momentum when COVID happened, with people looking for things to do outside. This year, I think we hit a new stride with the food truck night. I brought a lot of people in. There was just a lot, very well received. All of our public events have been selling out all year. So I'm looking to renovate a camper into like a beverage cart and do kind of coffee and tea in the morning. of coffee and tea in the morning and then possibly beer, wine, sangria things for our events. Because obviously, we do a lot for families. There's not much for adults. So I'm kind of trying to broaden our horizons and obviously increase revenue. And I feel like alcohol is a big revenue driver.
Okay. So I know we've issued a couple of one-day permits, right? Was that for you directly? Did you have someone coming in that did the sangrias?
Those were people that I was having coming in.
Okay.
And that's the thing, I want to be able to do certain events.
With your own staff?
With my own staff and bringing in a lot of outside people. Like, there's big minimums for them to show up. They want to make sure, you know, and I can't really, and this is what I say to the town a lot, like, I don't know the turnout on a lot of our events. Like, I'll put something out, 50 people will come. I'll put something else out and like 1,500 will come. And I'm like, oh, my God. So it's hard for me to get people to commit to come to our events without like a guaranteed turnout. So I feel like things I'm trying to do would be easier if I could facilitate it.
Yep, okay. So not knowing a whole lot of the, as you said, the camper, that's going to be a permanent fixture on the property? Trailer, camper?
So I guess this is what I'm kind of looking for guidance to you guys. The biggest issue I'm having in my growth of both businesses is I don't own the farm.
Okay.
So I've been back and forth with the Board of Health, like about the porta potties and things. Like, I don't have it in my budget to build like commercial septics, to bring water. Where I am on 106, like that's Bridgewater's water. That's not even East Bridgewater. So there's like a lot of issues logistically. So I would like to outfit the camper as a food truck.
Are you renting the area from Homestead? I mean, who, I guess, you see, the property is owned by somebody separate?
I lease the farm, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I mean, they're like family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A 10-year lease. Like, but at the same time, it's like, certain things I'm not going to spend money on putting on someone else's property. So in my mind, outfitting the camper as a food truck, getting it permitted the same way I would as a food truck, would make the most sense. And then I'd have the option to travel. Because with my Homestead Harvest business, we already have a pretty big following as far as our small-scale catering and things like that. So if I have a little cocktail thing, I could do charcuterie, like I can travel, I can probably get small wedding gigs on other farms, things like that. So I know, they came back to me today about some of the water and things like that.
Who did? Who's they?
I don't know. They, the Board of Health, whatever. Yeah, the Board of Health.
All right.
With like the utilities possibly needing to be permanent.
Okay.
But I just.
Well, we'll concentrate right now on the application for the liquor.
Okay.
As far as food, yeah, that would be worked on with the Board of Health and, you know, the facility itself. So I guess my only question, and this is, you know, this is open for discussion.
Okay.
This is why I think this is good for you and me.
Yeah.
And the board. Because I'm not quite sure how this works. David, you've been here quite a while. You got how this works?
This is new to me.
All right, okay. So it's all into everything.
I feel like a lot of things that I'm trying to do in a lot, like a lot of.
Well, let's start with this. So we've, you know, we've got food trucks in town. I don't know of any of them that are, that have liquor license.
I'm aware.
Okay. Would we even?
We didn't offer.
No.
Right.
Talking with the ABCC.
Okay.
It would have to be a stationary. It wouldn't be mobile.
But there are mobile alcohol.
Right. So I think you would have to go through a different, it wouldn't be through.
Well, in essence, if you're going to, there's two things you want to be doing. You want to hold these events or a lot more than, basically you have a permit, even though you want a truck that might move, you're saying, here's my base of operations. And I want a liquor license 365 days a year at that location. And how I'm going to serve alcohol is in the food truck or the trailer or whatever. But then you want to take that truck and go various places, which is a different license than for that location.
Is it issued by?
But wouldn't I have to have a license?
Right. If you want to.
So she'd need two different licenses, is what?
In essence, yeah. I mean, you're, you're a food truck operator. If you're going to go to other communities, you need the licenses in those communities.
With their one-day liquor permits.
Now, you might have to do it.
Like with my catering license.
Yep.
Yeah, I do that currently. Like, I have the catering license in Rockland, but any of the pop-ups I do in other towns, I have to get their permits.
Right. The challenge may be that whether it's the ABCC or building commissioner has said, if you're going to have a establishment there serving alcohol on a permanent basis, which is what you want to do, you need a permanent structure. You need a stationary structure. It can't be the food truck, I believe. And I don't know how much.
What if it was all prepackaged beverages? Like, what if it was Truly's Bud Lights, canned margaritas? Like, what if I wasn't, in the same way that I sell food that's prepared, but I can't prepare it in my store, can I sell alcohol that I am not mixing?
Mixing up, right.
You know what I mean?
The short answer is I don't know because, you know, I think it's something we'd have to check with the ABCC. Basically, here's what you want to do. And say to the ABCs, though you'd be better off asking them than ourselves because you know exactly what you want to do, you say to the ABC, here's the operation I want to run. I want to have a permanent liquor license at this address. I want to use this infrastructure, trailer, food truck, whatever, to do that. I don't want to, I'm going to not serve mixed drinks, but you probably then you're limiting your, I mean, the moment you get out of beer territory, you're probably getting into something that you're going to pour, like a glass of wine is coming out of the bottle.
Well, that's why I feel like maybe I'm applying for more than I need, but knowing the trajectory of everything I've done thus far, I'd rather just have that option, like.
So, you know, there's a beer and wine license, there's the all-alcohol license. I don't know that beer comes in two, three ounce, is it three ounces? I have no idea. I mean, the wine comes in three ounces.
You're all looking at me.
A wine pour is five ounces.
Well, and this is.
Three ounces?
A beer is a 12 ounce.
12 ounce usually, unless you're talking about a tall.
One ounce of alcohol, whatever, how many ounces.
Right.
I mean, they have.
I learned this in 7 grade.
Hand cocktails.
Okay. So you'd want to ask the ABCC, which, what can I do, given that, what do I need? Do I need, can I come to the town? What you're doing, and my recommendation is that the board not have to make any firm decision tonight until we can get, all get more information from the ABCC about this. Because you may need two different licenses. You may need an alcohol license tied to the catering and an alcohol license that's tied to that one location. But if you're going to get an alcohol license of any type tied to a location, again, having the comment from our building commissioner, that you need something that's not going to move. So that unfortunately, you may need a structure of some sort, a shed or something that has utilities tied to it. But at the same time, you want to run the food truck for the catering operation.
I understand what you're saying, but even if, even if I wasn't preparing the cocktails.
Right.
Why would it need to be stationary if I could get a 24-pack of Bud Light and put it in the ice trough? Because people come to my farm and they do that.
Right.
They're selling it out of a pop-up. I could theoretically have the liquor license and just act as a pop-up vendor on my own farm. No?
Again, I don't know. I think it's, again, we need to work together to describe to the ABCC that this is what you want to do, which licenses apply, which would be from this town, which might be from the ABCC.
Look, I don't think any one of us has any issue with working with you to, you know, to try to get something done over this.
No, I just, I'm getting frustrated.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Because I feel like everything I'm trying to do, there's so much back and forth of so many departments and towns. And I'm like, who has the answer? Like, if someone gave me the guy.
Welcome to town government.
Like, I have this, you know, retail food code because they were like.
When you talk to, you talk to the ABCC about what you want to do, you put an application together using their forms and such.
Correct.
Do you make, did you talk with staff there at the ABCC and describe, here's what I want to do? And did they then tell you, these are the licenses you're going to need?
No, I talked to the people here.
Okay.
And they said, these are what you need to do.
Everyone needs to be tip certified.
I am tip certified.
And liability.
Yeah, I think.
I have an application with my insurance agent for the liquor liability. It's like a separate policy, not a ride-on, so.
I think the crucial question is, is can, you know, again, you know, maybe talk with Patrick, but talk with the ABCC is figure out, can you have a trailer or some sort food truck that serves as the alcohol installation?
I mean, they exist. I'm not like.
Right.
They are.
Yeah, they do. They're beer trucks.
The decanted wine truck. I mean, they.
No, but, but I understand that you could have those, but they're part of catering operations. But can you have one that serves as the place of alcohol serving at a permanent location at the same time?
Patrick's email says, if it will have utilities installed, it may have to be stationary.
Right. This is why.
But what does that mean? Like, utilities installed? It's a camper, you're going to plug it in.
You're going to need electricity, you're going to need plumbing.
So that would be considered having utilities installed if you've plugged it in? Okay.
Why? I don't know.
So the question is.
They want to keep the beer cold.
It may have to be stationary. So that's, that's the question.
Right.
And who would have?
So my thing is, okay, so if I'm applying, say I didn't own Pony Town.
Right.
When I came here with you, like, oh, this is what I want to do with my truck. And then I could just hire myself to come to Pony Town. So how do I, like, how do I, if I just want to be a food truck?
Well, in which, well, in which case, it sounds like what you would want, I mean, this is me just spitballing here.
Yeah.
I don't claim to know as a certant, but it sounds like you would simply have a catering license.
Which I do.
Right. And you would go to there and, I don't, but I don't know, you know, again, the relationship, if you're, can you contract with yourself? I don't know. And again, you know, I mean, I haven't dealt with this particular situation before.
Okay.
So that I don't have a good answer for you tonight as to which license might provide you with the ways so you can operate your business.
Okay.
So.
But we want to support you. We're not.
No, I just, I like.
I don't want to see you spend money on permitting that then.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why I went, because I talked to maybe Lisa at the Board of Health today. And she's like, well, why are you going for the liquor? And I'm like.
Well, it's part of it, right?
Well, I'm like, because I know that after I do beer and wine for a month, it's going to be like, oh, people want craft cocktails. And I don't want to have to go through the whole process again. So I'd rather be over-permitted and not use it all.
So what, what is the cost for someone to get a permit, one-day permit? Is there, there must be a fee, right?
15 for beer and wine.
1,500?
Dollars.
50 dollars?
For one day.
Oh, why don't you just do that? Why wouldn't you do, what's the idea between?
Because I'm trying to grow, okay, I'm trying to grow like my catering.
Yeah.
Whole thing.
Okay.
And just like the niche market that I have of like, I just know that I could do really well if I could show up to a wedding with a charcuterie grazing table, craft cocktails and wine. Like, I think that could really.
But it goes back to, but it goes back to the, if you're not doing it there, you're doing a catering operation, which is a different license, I think, through the ABCC.
Might be, yeah, I have.
If you're going to, if you're going to a number, you're a caterer, you're going to a number of different venues. You're not picking a permanent location. So if you want to bring food, the board's there that you want. And then you want to bring alcohol and run the catering operation here, there, everywhere else, then you're talking catering rather than a permanent location.
So if I just wanted to do it at Pony Town?
Well, then it would be a permanent location, and that's a different story, right?
Well, I think what the idea is, she in essence.
Trail, a camper.
I'm making this up, but let's say, you know, at 12 o'clock, she appears with the food truck and disappears at 8 o'clock. And the next day, she comes back at 12 o'clock and leaves at 8 o'clock with the food truck. And she's catering at that location for any number of days throughout the year. Maybe it's 100 days, maybe it's 150, maybe it's 200, whatever.
Yep.
And the answer is, I don't know.
I mean, I'm happy to leave it on the farm and only host events here. But when you say hook up utilities, like, my question is, who tells me what does that look like? Like, can I do it completely like a food truck? Like, they have holding tanks, they have water tanks, they use generators. Like, that is the only option I have because I do not have lots.
Well, there are. You still need to work with the Board of Health. I mean, that I know in the sense of the Board of Health does the inspections for food trucks, if their location's going to be, you know, if there's, they may go other places, but.
Yeah, like, don't, isn't their license at their home base?
The alcohol and the food aren't attached, are they?
No.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, if you have a food truck or a canteen truck, as some of us all know what those were, they have to be from a licensed food commissary, kitchen. Commissary is another word for kitchen. It's just a bigger area. And they're pulled in every night, they're washed out every night at the commissary, the trash, the garbage, the syrups, the sticky stuff gets washed down into the commissary septic system. And then they're steam cleaned and then they're repacked with ice, food, prepackaged foods. They can do prepackaged sausages and things like that as long as they're precooked, which, you know, most of us know, hot dogs are precooked. So there's no food prep going on a food truck for the most part. The new ones this year have grills and waste tanks, almost like a camper.
Right.
But they still have to go to a licensed place to clean it out, to get rid of the trash, you know, legal dump site for both septic and trash. So that's the biggest difference. They go back to the restaurant. They go, the one in town comes back to his restaurant, cleans up, takes the trash.
Or even if it's not a restaurant per se, it is a home base of operation.
And commissaries are like, kind of like a big camping place where you have a pump-out station, a steam cleaning station, an area to get fresh ice that's approved, source and water and that thing. So that's the difference to a food truck. And she could do that, but the farm is different. The farm starts out at a different level. Like, those places don't have any animals on them. And they're not allowed to have animals out there. So the farm start, farm stands start at a different level. And they are restricted to what they can serve and offer to the public for that reason. So it's trying to mix it all together that we're running into a little, you know, little brick walls here and there.
So.
But I have a commissary.
Okay.
So, and that's licensed and inspected by wherever it is.
It's owned in Rockland.
I know it's in Rockland. I was just, you know.
With the rules for the camper beverage, would they be the same as if they were, as if you're serving food? Or is it different if it's just beverages?
It has to be kind of the same.
Okay.
A lot of beverages have a lot of sugar in them. And they can have milk in them. So it's still, you know, bacterial growths and issues.
Yep.
So it still has to be like stainless steel with easily cleanable walls on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
You can't have like, you know, curtains and rugs in there.
I mean, do you have the pictures of what I?
So it's the same kind of things that a food truck would need. Probably, I would assume, a bigger wine cooler and a bigger ice.
She has a food truck permit via Rockland, yes.
For the camper?
Whatever, whatever.
Well, I'm not putting the money into doing the camper until I know that I can get the liquor license. I don't know if I'm doing the right order of operation, but to me, I'm not going to spend the 40 grand to renovate this camper. And then no one's going to issue me a liquor license.
Right.
So.
Is the camper registered in Rockland?
No, she just has a catering.
Oh.
She's a camper.
You do, you do the farmer's market, right? And you sell.
Correct. I do the farmer's market, charcuterie.
I mean, it seems like, there's a lot of moving parts, right? So which is fine. I would just say, you know, if we had that information, the ABC, as far as we are concerned for the liquor license, because that's really what, you know, we're in charge. The Board of Health is a completely different board than us. But I think we find out from them what, you know, what the process is and what the guidelines are. They must be the ones that set the guidelines for the towns, right? To say, this is what has to happen.
Or the type of license that you would need to operate the way you want to operate.
Right.
Okay.
Because it sounds great.
I mean, my issue is that I know that I'm going to be on my farm all the time. So I was assuming that you guys are, this needs to be approved here.
Well, the liquor license will have to be, I would assume, but it depends on what you're doing with it. Like, you know, if you're moving around in the, in the food truck, then, you know, maybe that's a separate.
In the sense of you've got, again, goodbye. You've got to get a food truck license.
Okay.
You want an alcohol license. We've had you as a series of one-day alcohol licenses there at the site, okay? And there may have been other days that you were, whether in West Bridgewater or Whitman or Rockland, that you had a series of one-days there. And you dealt with those all as one-day licenses. You want to switch over to a permanent license at that location, in a sense of a year-round license. So that we're going to, that if we're issuing that license, then we've got to make sure that what you're doing fits within that license. And if the ABCC says you can have a food truck there. In a, if the A B C C says you can have a food truck there serving alcohol, and that's considered a permit, that can be a permanent, uh, that can be the facility for a permanent license at one location, and that's the license the board can issue, and that's what we can find out from the A B C C, is whether you need a permit structure or it can be something, in essence, on wheels or the trailer or whatever, that can be moved, that may not, may or may not be there every day. There may be a hundred and fifty days that you're there serving in East Bridgewater, but you still wanna use the trailer thirty days a year, fifty days a year in other locations. And if that's the case, can the trailer serve as your base of operations for a permanent license? And that's what I'd have to ask the A B C C.
Okay.
I mean, does that describe?
Yeah, I just, I don't.
Does that describe what you wanna do?
I get what you're saying, I just.
What I'm trying, what I wanna do, though, is make sure that I'm asking the A B C C the right questions and describing what you wanna do correctly. 'Cause I'd hate to go to them, say, this is, this is.
Ideally, that is what I wanna do, but I am, like, whatever you approve me for, if someone tells me what I can do.
Right.
With what you're approving me for, that, you know what I mean, that's what I'll do.
I think if you wanted to just, like, set up a, a bar area in the barn, right, in the permanent structure, then we would just be talking about a regular liquor license, right? It's, it's the, it's the camper.
Which I am fine with, but then. My issue is, if I do that, is there somebody who can tell me, it would, maybe it's the Board of Health, where the line is drawn from me having that permit without having to put in a commercial septic and bringing hot water to the barn? 'Cause I cannot do that.
That would be the Board of Health.
Okay.
'Cause all the board, the board is not going to be inspecting a septic system. They're not gonna be inspecting your water lines or something like that, or looking.
Okay.
They're going to be issuing a liquor license, allowing you to serve alcohol, whether it's beer and wine or whether it's all alcohol. But the actual, it's, I know it's, it's the way this state is set up, alcohol's over here and you license alcohol. Food and liquids, including alcohol, in terms of being able to qualify for, under the health code, goes through the Board of Health. And the Board of Health then will say, here's what you need to get a food permit. You need, you know, meet the sanitary regulations for the serving of food and liquids, you know, consumables.
And I feel like they are not going to approve me if it is a permanent structure. So in order to be approved, I feel like it has to be temporary.
Jane Mary, what?
Well, and for the septic end of it, it depends on people. You have ten people a day at your facility, and it closes in November and it opens up in May, that's kinda temporary. That's a porta potty situation, you know, based on numbers. But if, Title V says, if you have people there year-round, and it's a certain amount of people per number of seats, per number of capacity.
'Cause you may wanna have a hundred people there on a given day.
Right.
Which I understand, but I, when I built the barn, these were questions I asked, because I wouldn't have spent the fifty thousand dollars building a barn to host events if they had told me that in order to do so, I would also need so, so, and so. I feel like only recently, in the past week, has she brought to my attention the concern of the porta potty, which has never been a concern, and I've been here since, like, twenty sixteen.
Again, that's something that you'll need to talk to the Board of Health about, in a sense of at what point do you need to switch over? I mean, I'm making this up, not making this, but I'll give you a point. Went to Falmouth. There's ten thousand people there for an event. They're not using indoor bathrooms. They've got hundreds of porta potties for a one-day event, but they've got ten thousand people. I don't know whether there's a situ- a formula that says, as long as you have enough porta potties for the number of people you're going to have, you can continue to use porta potties rather than, you know, a permanent installation of a septic system. But that's something you work with, with the Board of Health, any more than we have events here. I mean, are the Commercial Club or whatever, you know, if it's big enough, and they had the Chili Fest, right, they probably had porta potties there, right?
Sure.
Yeah. And that had probably thousands of people there. So, the quite, so you can certainly tie, if you have enough porta potties, you can, you know, you can do that, but you need to work with the Board of Health about, okay, I'm gonna have a hundred people a day here, how many porta potties do I need? How often do I need to change them over, refresh or whatever, but that's, you would work with the Board of Health.
Unfortunately, I think Elizabeth's case, she doesn't know she's gonna have fifty or three thousand.
Right, correct. And that's like my issue with the food truck, and I, I felt like they were kinda like, oh, you need more porta potties. And I'm like, okay, 'cause yesterday fifteen hundred people showed up, and then next week soccer started, and now I have forty people coming, and the food trucks aren't making money. So it's like, it's just hard to finish.
Yeah.
Uh, but I did get a second one.
I mean, look at, like, King Richard's Fair, I mean, however, they used to just have porta potties, and then the town said, nope. And they had them, they brought in the trailers that are actual, like, they're still porta potties, but they're like permanent? Yeah, you know, because it was too many people.
Not medieval.
What's that?
The not medieval.
No, there's nothing.
Having a period correct about porta potties at King Richard's Fair.
And they just shoot trees, then?
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah.
So we can certainly help you in the, uh, you know, gathering that information regarding what you wanna do for liquor.
You provide the board with your contact information. Let me try and write up a narrative.
Okay.
To ask the A B C C, here's a series of questions we're trying to.
I mean, I feel like my application that I submitted to you guys with the pictures of the food truck and the description of what I'm trying to do is what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Um.
But I, what I wanna do is, if I'm gonna ask A B C C, I don't wanna ask the, I don't wanna describe something that you don't wanna do. I wanna describe what you wanna do and have them answer on that basis, so that we get the right answer from the A B C C based on what you wanna do, not on something I made up.
So we're not saying no. We're just saying.
We need more information.
Okay.
But what you're applying for is the stationarity, 'cause it doesn't say anything about a mobile food truck in the application, just the stationarity outside the barn, right? Is what you're applying for?
Yes. But like I'm saying, if having it outside of the barn means I need permanent utilities, I cannot. So I would like to bring it as a food truck with, like, holding tanks, water tanks, septic, whatever, that can, to avoid that. Does that make sense?
So, can the board pick a new date, I mean, in a sense of, we had, the, we're, this is, and by the way, you have a public hearing. I don't know if there's anybody else here to speak on this issue, but the board also will need to pick a definite date and time to continue the hearing, too. Whether the board intends to meet next Monday on the twenty-fourth, or we do have a likely meeting on the seventh. We have, we set it up as part of the town meeting schedule for review of the warrant with the town moderator and town council. And you can continue it to that date.
Probably continue it to the seventh, 'cause we, we may not have any more information in a week, and with the moderator, it's not long.
Yes.
Just go through and.
You want us to start with this at six-thirty, or at six o'clock, or some other time?
Whenever she's available.
That's fine.
Six o'clock is fine.
I'll wear my suit next time. I came straight from the barn, don't mind me.
Pretty sure we don't judge based on that.
I wasn't sure.
Not always.
Okay, so if the board would vote to continue the hear, first, check to see if there's anybody else here to speak to this, and then, if, after doing that, the board can vote to continue the hearing to November seventh at six P M.
Yep.
Let's continue.
Anything else missing?
And, uh, we'll just, you know, let's get some answers from the authority that gives us the guidance that we'll need in order to make sure we do it correctly the first time.
Okay. Noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Do we need to vote?
Do we need to vote on that? You wanna vote on it? Okay, yeah. Is there, there was no one else here, right, to speak on?
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until November seventh, twenty twenty-two at six P M.
Second.
First floor conference room.
Second.
Motion made second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you then. Thank you.
Thanks, nice.
All right. Yep, the public hearing, Mr. Clark.
Right, so we're obviously seeking grant funds, um, both through the state but also through the heads, um, for cleanup of the precise engineering site. As part of that process, we were required to hold a public hearing on what our proposed cleanup efforts are. Um, the information was, we had a public notice of this and information concerning what the town's plans were, were, um, part of the public note, were, um, available here in the selectmen's office. Um, I don't know if anybody from the public is here to speak to this.
And no one signed up for the hearing?
No one signed up, there's no one here.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I recommend that the board vote to then close the eye.
Do Tracy get to come in? She's.
Oh, she's here.
She will be, yeah.
Okay, fine, yes.
This isn't, this isn't what we're talking about right now, though.
No.
Are we done with this?
Well, no, Tracy Costa, who's our, Tracy Costa.
Tracy's zooming in.
Who is?
Tracy Costa.
Oh, okay.
Has been working with the town for several years.
Yep.
Good years.
Remediation.
It should, like, come up. The matter.
Yeah, that's on, uh, free text or something.
She wants to reschedule the meeting at one minute.
Okay. Okay. Oh, we do it on seven? Is that enough time?
Yeah, because it's just, it's a meeting, so we really don't.
Okay, so we'll add to the seven, okay. Okay. She's asked to continue this to the seventh, since we didn't officially start at seven, so.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for E B A Brownfield's cleanup grant applications until, uh, November seventh at six fifteen?
No, well, depends on how, because it sounds as if we need to open it right there at that specific time. So I don't.
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty might be better, 'cause I don't know how long we're gonna spend on the alcohol license.
Okay.
And just make sure whatever we're doing at six-thirty, that we adjourn whatever we're doing and go into.
Should we back up the, uh, no, we already put out the public hearing, the alcohol one until five-thirty?
No, no, that's.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
I think we'll have the answers by then, yeah.
You agree with that motion?
Why, why don't we, why don't we put the public hearing at seven o'clock? At six-thirty, we'll go in, it doesn't usually take a half hour to go through the law. It's just, I just don't wanna get in trouble on that one.
Should we? The alcohol?
No, the alcohol's at six-thirty, we already go.
Oh, we did it at six-thirty?
I mean, at six.
Six, yeah.
Let's put this off until seven. You know, this is not going to take a long time, but.
Just do it at five-thirty.
I'm fine with that.
I can do that.
That would probably be better, because I don't think that will take a half hour.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we, we end up sitting around.
Let's be a five-thirty.
I'll amend that motion to, um, continue the hearing until five-thirty on November seventh, twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-three E B A Brownfield's cleanup grant application.
Okay, so then.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Need discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we go to number ten?
Number ten. Sure.
Skipping.
Back to, um.
What happened to seven and eight?
We, we have somebody on the wall. We had said to that person, we wouldn't be doing it at a seven.
Okay.
All right, it's back to our action.
Are we going to ten? Are we gonna go to ten?
Yep.
Yep, that's you.
Welcome to the audio conferencing center. Please enter a conference ID followed by pound. If you're the meeting organizer, press star now.
Is it John? Jonathan?
Yes.
Please enter your PIN and then press pound. Sorry, I didn't get that. Please enter your PIN and then press pound. Sorry, I didn't get that. Welcome to the audio conferencing. If you're the meeting organizer, press star now. After the tone, please record your name and then press pound.
Selectmen's office.
Something's having trouble.
You are now joining the meeting. Please wait for the leader to admit you to the meeting. Thank you for your patience. You are now joining the meeting.
He's muted.
I think that's on his side. Should be on his side, I believe.
Are you talking to him?
Yeah.
Can you sometime mute?
Good?
Hello?
John, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. All right, um, so you're in the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll, when we state the, um, the action item first?
We're here to discuss a noise complaint regarding the Villa at Ritter Farm.
Uh, John, you're here with, um, myself, Peter Spargone, Chairman David Sheedy, Vice Chair, and, I'm sorry, Carolyn Julius, Vice Chair, and David Sheedy, Clerk. It's been a long night already, Mr. Southfire. So, um, I guess, you can hear us fine?
Yes, I can hear you totally fine.
All right, great, great. Um, so why don't we start, um, introduce yourselves and, and then kinda give us a, a description of what, uh, what the complaint is?
Some day in the first, John and I have been in touch. Um, the sound at Villa has been a problem for years now. And, um, me and the neighbors, we were complaining to the wrong department, we found out. We were calling the police department, and they always say, we're gonna send someone over and ask them to turn it down. Never happened. Um, eventually I, Patrick, I mean, came over for a permit, and he spoke to me, say, oh, you better put in a written complaint. Before I did that, before I did that, I went on the Villa website to reach out to the manager, which is John. He has been in touch, has been very helpful, however, there is no consistency on the sound. And me and the neighbors were just done, like, it's ten o'clock, the bass is, is blasting. If we have the TV off and, like, the AC's off, you're trying to sleep at ten o'clock, 'cause we're. If we have the TV off and like the AC's off, you're trying to sleep at ten o'clock, because we're, go to bed early. It's just like, it feels like my heart's feeling, it's following the beat, and it's just awful until midnight. And since when I've been in touch with John, they have been somewhat better, like, at least the following the times. Before, they would go past ten, fifteen minutes every night. And it's extremely loud. It, it's loud. John now has an app that measures the decibel, but it's still like, I feel that he needs to be on top of the DJs, otherwise they won't follow the rules. And John has told me himself, sometimes the manager that's right there, she walks or he walks away, the DJ blasts it back up. So there's no monitoring, and this has to, this has to be over, like, we need to have consistency. Because it is a noise nuisance, nuisance, and it, we cannot enjoy outside late at night. We can't sit on our porch without having the loud music, and we can't even go to bed in this an hour, because it's, it's really loud.
So the biggest thing is consistency.
Right, inconsistency with the timing that they, they shut down, or the, I mean, I guess I'm.
They, they adhere to the timing. They adhere to that part of it, but like my wife said, we're, we're one of the closest, they were at sixty-four Old Oak. We've been here a couple of times for the lights, so. She'll text with John, and John will say, you know, can you turn it down? And right after that, it goes right back up. And it's the bass especially, the bass is just cranking. It's in, we're in our house, we're trying to sleep, it's eleven o'clock.
You feel the vibration on the walls?
You can feel the vibrations. I mean, we're, we're captive in our own houses. We can't have the windows open. We gotta have the TV cranking. And, you know, there's a young boy across the street who's constantly looking out by it. And we just want some consistency, that's all we want.
Keeping a certain level, that's okay, you know, but I saw pictures, the, the tent, of course, is open on the side, so that collaborates the sound to travel. As John has said, during summer, doesn't travel as much because humidity. John, correct me if I'm wrong. But it's, it's too loud, and like the last four weeks, there was this one day especially, we could hear the DJ, and it's not a music that we like. It's, you know, just different taste, and it's loud. So we, we want to make sure, like, there is a limit set, which I believe we saw some papers, and there was a limit, sixty decibels. Upon talking to Patrick, he said apparently there's not. I saw those papers myself here, saying that the Villa should have, should provide with a patrol car, should have a limit of the decibels and the alcohol license. But Patrick said that it's not active.
Which also written.
The decibel limits. They don't need to follow, which is, is a surprise to me.
You're talking about the special permit?
I am. So there is a page there, I have a picture of them. And it does say there is a limit of that.
And when you say Patrick, you mean Patrick Franny, the building inspector?
Yes, I do.
Okay. John, would you like to respond from what you heard? He's still there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes, John.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't have the best connection, I, I can't make out exactly what, exactly what she was saying. I can just say that, you know, she, we, she called, she left a message on September 10th about the noise being too loud, and we, you know, I called her right away and we discussed it. And I, you know, we've been there since two thousand and fifteen, well, we've been there since two thousand and nine, but we've, you know, once we got the permit in two thousand and fifteen, and we've been doing events consistently since, you know, since then. We definitely have been doing more events since COVID. You know, maybe a little more events than usual, because people like to have it outside. I did hire a sound engineer to come down on, on October 8th. And the, the Diane wasn't there, but the other neighbor, Lisa sixty-four, I think it's sixty, sixty-nine or sixty-four.
Yep.
Was there, and we came up with a good, I thought it was a good sound level. She said it was, it was great. I don't know if she's there tonight, is she there?
Yes. No, the reason why some neighbors choose not to come is because.
They're fearful of retribution.
Yes, because of the owner of the land.
What's that?
We're gonna live like that, that's it. We're the only ones who want to come.
Yeah, I, I.
They've just, John, they. Yeah, John, they just, they just don't, they don't feel comfortable coming to the, to the meeting, whatever, whatever reason.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and that's, that's their prerogative, obviously, yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, that's fine. But I've been, what I've done to change, you know, to look into the situation is I hired a sound engineer. We now talk to every single DJ beforehand. I have a conversation with them, I talk to them personally, I tell them that they, you know, they gotta keep within the limits of that, what we tell them. They can't, you know, don't bring heavy bass systems in there now. On October, I forget, there was a Sunday where there was a new DJ that brought some, you know, too, too many subwoofers, and so now I have a better understanding. And we just tell people, to tell the DJs that come in, you know, you gotta follow it strictly, there's gonna be a police detail there. If we get complaints from the neighbors, then, you know, you're, you're gonna be talked to, so. And, and, you know, we're gonna come up with something and have them sign something, so they, you know, they're acknowledging what we've gone over with them. On the night of the event that I have the sound engineer there, I mean, I had him take videos and you can see the decibel readings. And I'm not saying that, you know, what Diane said is not true. It, it, you know, I'm sure that it was too loud for them in the bass and stuff like that. But when I, when we have the sound engineer conduct his testing, the, he, he also went to the Ritter property line. And it, I mean, you couldn't really hear it, so I have to sort of find exactly what that level was. I don't know if, I think it's just maybe most likely probably been the bass, so I think we can sort of handle that. I'd like to do more testing when I'm actually there, because I haven't been there. Where I can talk to someone with like a walkie-talkie and see exactly where they're at. Because, you know, I've been learning a lot about sound systems and this thing, and, you know, it's sort of complicated. Every DJ has a different setup, so, you know, some have subwoofers, some don't. Anyway, I don't want to bore you with all this, like, the, the technical aspect, because I'm, I'm still sort of getting it. But I, I think we, the last week, the last few weeks, I think probably should have been pretty good, since after October 8th. Have they not been good since October 8th, since the sound engineer was here? Or is it still too loud?
So I've told John, I'm more than happy to have him coming inside our house and sing for himself, and he knows that. Unfortunately, the engineer came, one of our friends went missing, we had to, we're part of the search party. We could not be home that night. And John has an app, he has sent me pictures. I do see they're measured from different spots. And all that we want is that, for that to be down. I don't want to be have to have to, I'm sorry, I don't want to have to text John. Every Thursday, every Friday, every Saturday, they say, John, can you please text them and ask them to turn it down? Because it, it goes on all night, like, I appreciate all the help that John has been giving us, but it's just a non-stop texting, I don't want that. I want to open up my windows, enjoy the fresh air, I want to be able to hear the TV, and I have to turn the TV like super loud just to cover the sound. And that's it, like, if it's loud for us, I can only imagine for the people outside the tent. So I see some neighbor towns, they do have some noise ordinance, and I know East Bridge Water does not have one. So I'm assuming we can use common sense, set a limit. And the thing is, if the DJ doesn't follow, I understand they're gonna ban the DJ, but what about it? Like, so I have to hear that all night? And just rest assured, like, the DJ's not coming back? What about next week? How many DJs are out there?
So, John, I think, you know, consistently trying to work with, with the DJs is a, is a great start. You know, I think what would be, would be good, this is the first time we're hearing of this, obviously, we're at a different department. You went to just the building department, I guess, upstairs?
We've called the police several times.
Okay.
Bunch of times.
Seen the fall on deaf ears.
Yeah, so, John, what I would say is this is, you know, continue your, your process. I mean, obviously, we may note that this is the first time that we've heard of this meeting, and, you know, it does sound like it is getting better. Maybe there's not as much consistency.
Not ideal.
Right, not ideal, but.
I do think somehow.
There is some, some movement in one direction. And I think the things that you have liked, do you remember particularly the dates that you thought were better than?
Because I texted with him, I say, like, I, I told him, this is specifically, I say, the DJ is out of his mind.
Yeah. So what we'd like to do, see here, obviously, and we've talked about this in, in just a few weeks ago with, with the rooster incident, right? We, we hope that, and that's a sound situation.
Yeah.
Even though it's a little bit different, obviously. You know, we, we like to first see that the neighbors are, are trying to work it out together. And at least in this instance, it seems like, you know, Mr. Sapphire and yourselves are, you know, trying to get to a common ground, which is, which is great.
So can you advocate me, the way that I see, it is a zoning violation?
For the, for the sound?
Yes, because like, we're not supposed to have events on that zoning, I do understand the special permit.
Yeah, there's a different permit for that, so we'd have to talk to.
Well, if they've got.
Patrick Franny.
If they had a special permit, which is, I mean, we have the minutes.
Yep.
From the meetings where the permits were approved, they have the special permit.
Yeah, it just seems that still, like, the R1, that's where we are, the residential one area, is not meant to have that. I understand about the special permit, yes, however, it just seems like, yeah, so.
Yeah, we're not gonna get around, around that. I mean, that's been here for a lot longer than we've been here, as far as the special permit goes.
Correct, in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, there was complainings, and they are upstairs. So it's technically not a very.
But I think John said he's working with you, though, I mean.
We are.
Right.
Correct, and what I'm saying is, I don't want to be texting with John. Even though John is great, I don't want to have to text him. Like, I don't want to have the neighbors all texting, oh my God, like, it's really loud tonight, and like, can you please text John?
Well, if, I would think if John is working on this problem, so if he's talking to the DJs and he's gonna have them be signing something in the very near future about that, John is the one that will have to be contacted to do something about that. He has the authority to check these decibels, that's going on, or his person that is in the tent has that.
Okay.
And that's where the authority would be.
And you guys can't get anything written about, like, limits and, like, if they violate that, like, is there?
Well, the special permit points out.
There are two things, this, I don't, I have looked at the special, I haven't seen anything about the decimal.
Neither has I.
Yeah.
If I'm missing something, I'm happy to, you know, be told otherwise.
May I show you a page, that we took a picture?
This is the special permit.
That's used to be on Board of Health, I mean, back when I was on the Board of Health.
This is, but that's the Villa saying to itself.
Right, the special permit through the planning and building department.
I do have those, however, they're not able to explain to me what this paper is.
Well, that's the, the Villa has its own rules, in a sense of, you want an event at your, at the Villa. You will follow these rules that we, the Villa, set for your event, which includes ninety decibels. I don't know where, I don't know where ninety decibels, but whatever. That's the rule that we, you know, if the Smiths want to go there and have an event, they're told, here are the rules. Here's how, you're going to follow these rules if you're having an event at the Villa, one of which is a sound limit. But that's the Villa's rules, not the town's rules.
All right, so I would like to know what the Villa is doing to whoever's not following this.
Well, that's a conversation you need to have with the Villa.
Okay.
I mean, if the Villa, you know.
Well, if I.
Go ahead, John.
I just got that, that's what we brought in, so I can give you a copy of that.
No, go ahead, John, you got the floor.
Okay, I think that we have three tent events left for the year. And then I'd like to, you know, I'm pretty confident that we can, you know, come to a, a happy point. I just, I had one person do sound testing, and he couldn't really hear anything at the property line at a certain level. And, and I just, I want to be there myself, so I could actually see what he was saying. Because the next weekend, I did what he said, and it was too loud. So I need to go in and do more, like, sort of testing. And at this point, I'll just, you know, I'll just stay on it, next three events. And then we don't have our next event until next May, but at some point, I'd like to go there on, not at, you know, when it's not eleven o'clock at night, but when it's dark out and, you know, the sun is set, and I can sort of see with my own, you know, see and be there and witness it, you know? Because the, the sound engineer told me something that said, he's like, it doesn't, sometimes doesn't matter what the decibel level is in the tent. It's like, it's really what it more is at the property line. So, you know, I have, you know, I, I don't know if it's ever gonna be like nothing, like, no sound whatsoever, you know? I don't know if that's realistic. I just, you know, I, I've tried to do the best that I can over the last few weeks, once I found out that this was occurring. And, you know, I just need some more time to figure it out.
Yeah, I think as long as you're working on the, the situation, and, and, you know, it sounds like there are, have been instances or weddings or events that you've had there that have worked to the, to what the neighbors are hoping for. So, I mean, I think putting those, those times together and, and, you know, if it was DJ Jazzy Jeff or whoever was at that event that was spinning that day.
You know him too.
Yeah, right, then maybe that would give us an idea of what he does versus, yeah, and the next DJ that comes up, you know? So, yeah, I appreciate you continuing to work on it, and I think if you, you do, you do that when you get, when you get back out, back out this way at the, at the Villa, then with only three events left this year, hopefully we can curb the problem going forward, you know? So, let's see how that goes.
Can you go away for the weekend?
One last thing, yeah, and just one last thing, if I may, because, you know, Diane said that it was, I believe, fairly good until about the middle of August, it wasn't that, you know, I don't remember exactly what she said, but it wasn't that bad, or it was fine. And then what I think what happened is, it's, once it starts getting colder out, the sound technician said, you know, he's like, there's less humidity in the air, there's less, you know, it just sometimes when it gets colder out, the sound can travel farther. So that would be, you know, maybe we'd have, we'd have to make an adjustment, you know?
Yeah, makes sense.
But there's other things I'm sure that we can do, but it was just something that I wanted to, you know, make the board or whoever they're aware of.
Yep.
Is that, I think, you know, it's other factors too, I think, but we'll, we'll, we'll get a handle on it.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a very severe negotiation, me and John, like, we have open communication. John, I just want to make sure, like, you understand, like, I just definitely needed to put this on the paper, make it formal, so you guys know. Move forward from here, you know, I don't want to have to be on those taxes anymore, can you please turn it down? That's it, I just want to be able to enjoy the peace and quiet of our zone, all right?
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
All right.
Thanks, you guys.
All right, you're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I've seen regards to the police department since two thousand and nineteen, like, there's four complaints. There was three in twenty twenty-one and one in twenty twenty-two. I've given each of you a copy of the complaints and what the officer did.
I've called the council nine times this year.
Every call is recorded at the station, four complaints since two thousand and nineteen.
I think we made three, three this year, so I don't think, I don't think that's accurate at all.
All right, well, let's, let's try to get to the point we need to, and then we're good. All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Chairman.
Is, are we done?
Yep, John's gone. Okay. We gotta skip back up to.
Number seven. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to review and vote on the request from Jennifer Horton, Nadia Clancy of Community Coalition for Change for the Use of the Town Common for the Third Annual Celebration of Multicultural Liberalism. the third annual celebration of multicultural liberalism. An event with food, vendors, music, speakers, and performers supporting diversity. Event will be on June 25, 2023, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, motion made second, any discussion?
No.
Well, with last year, David, you were there the year before, right?
Yeah, I spoke the first year.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right. So it's a great event, fun time.
It is good.
Looking forward to it, all in favor?
They're coming back again.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to review and vote the request of Diane Phillips for the use of town common in town parking lot for our Massachusetts general election, get out the vote event between November 5 through the 8, 2022. Participants may be holding signs, and some signs will be placed in the ground and then removed at the end of each day's event, November 5, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., November 6, 2022, and November 7, 2022, four to five hours during sunrise to sunset, November 8, 2022, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, motion made second, discussion?
Charlie, I know we haven't had this before, could you just give a little background on the sign?
Okay, so let me separate signs, if I want to have lunch at the town common, just sit there, I don't need a permit to do that. If I want to walk around with a sign, whatever it is, I don't care what you're saying on the sign, I don't need a permit to do that. Where we're drawing the line is when you're actually disturbing the property, so you want to hang a sign on the gazebo as part of your event, just like you did with multicultural event, you'll have signs up there that are going to be, not people walking around, they're going to be there hanging on whatever, or in the ground wherever during the event, and then they take them out. The same is true for this, where they're going to have people there, that some of them might be carrying signs, they're going to have signs in the ground, at the end of the day, or whenever they're leaving, they take the signs out, and everything's back to being as it was before they came in.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made second, all in favor?
Just one thing, I don't, I want to make clear whether the application says so or not, that this is not an exclusivity situation. If somebody else wants to be carrying signs around the common at the same time, it's perfectly fine for them to be doing so. They want to have, somebody else wants to put signs in the ground, they'll have to come back to you to get a similar permit.
These aren't political, these are just trying to get people to vote.
Oh, this won't be political.
Whatever, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
It'll be political signs. Right, yeah, they will be political signs, yeah.
I thought it was just trying to get, just get people out to vote, so...
Yep.
Yeah, vote for this person.
Okay, and I'm glad that was cleared up.
What can I say?
All right, so what you're saying is if another group wants to come in...
If they want to walk around with signs, they don't need a permit. They want to put signs in the ground, they need a permit.
All right, we got that clear. All right, thank you. All right, now that being said, motion's been made second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to dedicate the town common gazebo in memory of Robert E. McCarthy.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion?
No, we've had discussion about this a long time ago, we just never put it to a vote, and I understand Carol can probably give us more information, that the Kiwanis is putting a plaque together to put at the stairs in front of the gazebo?
Yeah, it came up at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to make sure that we had done what we needed to do, so that Kiwanis can go ahead and order the plaque and make arrangements to fix it.
All righty.
That's a great idea.
The club received a lot of donations in Bob's memory, so this is one of the ways that the club is using that money.
Cool, all right, I look forward to the event with that, that's well-deserving, for sure.
Any anticipation, if they expect to do that this year, or...
I don't know, but I can find out.
Sure you can. It might take a while to get the plaque.
Yeah, I'll find out and let Charlie know, and then pass that over.
All right, motion's been made second, and all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Mike Doyle as the plumbing gas inspector effective October 17, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Second.
Motion's made second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Kevin Doyle as the alternate plumbing gas inspector effective October 17, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to discuss the possibly vote on adding a stop sign at the corner of Hillcrest and Murray Street.
Second.
Motion's made second, discussion?
Chief, do you know if this is a four-way, a three-way?
Where's this?
Intersection, in the sense of, I don't know where she actually wants the stop sign. So, whatever's, whatever's the... So Hillcrest will, the traffic will stop on Hillcrest?
Traffic will stop on Murray.
Murray, okay.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, it's a good area for, this, so, I mean, it doesn't just stop here, we go to the state or somebody, or, no?
No, this is town.
It's simply a traffic order, we have, in fact, one of the things we did during the last year was, we was able to index all the traffic orders with the help from the town clerk's office, so that we now have them as a complete package. So if you want to know where all the stop sign locations are, that the board's authorized whether last year or 20 years ago, you've got a whole list.
All right, thanks, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
We passing over 14?
I don't know, you tell me.
Oh, I didn't know if we had, do we have everything ready to discuss it?
Well, I have in my, I wrote notes about the articles, yes. So I'd be ready, I would be ready to discuss the articles.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to discuss articles for the special annual town meeting. I vote to approve and close special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All right, motion made second, Charlie?
So, I don't know which version that you have, but I'll go through the articles, what I have, so we have an article to approve contracts with the unions and the personnel contracts, we'll have fire chief, council and aging director, the superior officers, because you signed off on that, I expect to have DPW done. The personnel wage grid, I still need to talk with you about, this is based on the work that the college center did, and whether we want to make adjustments in this fiscal year for the wage grid for the non-union personnel. So I'll work with you on this this week.
Okay.
And then we'll have, if we're going to do something, then we'll have an actual motion to appropriate money in those line items, if we're going to make changes, to change the appropriations, just as we're doing for the union contracts. Capital plan, we have four articles, EB CAM IT security, there is sufficient money in the EB CAM revolving fund to cover this cost, so for 16K. Utility truck for the water department, we would take that out, water department fund balance, so we have sufficient money there. You know, the library's security cameras, that money would need to come from the stabilization fund, and then there's the Leland Farms feasibility study, they were looking for $75,000. I need to check with them whether that's the gross or the net. We've received a $28,000 earmark grant, so I don't know whether it's 75 plus the 28, or it's 75 minus the 28, but we'll get that cleared up. There's a separate article for funding the library directors, we got to switch over and increase in salary, but there's sufficient funds in that line item, because we went so long, right, that we only, we'll just fund it at a dollar, because we don't need additional money in the line item, but the town should in fact approve the contract, even if it's just an increase of a dollar.
Okay.
Checking with the DPW and the town accountant to see about the need to put additional funds into the accounts for electricity and natural gas, because obviously, we've had, we're expecting rate increases, but they may or may not affect the town. Melanie's going to talk with Doug Stevenson, who's our energy advisor on that, and make sure whether we're going to have sufficient money. She also pointed out that, worse came to worse, we could, if we see an overage occurring, we can, at the special town meeting in May, we can fund the overage then. Interest on short-term loans, because in fact, we just did the new ban, but I talked with, we probably can skip over that article, or even take it out of the warrant, because I talked with Melanie and Pam, and there should be sufficient funding to pay for the interest charge on the ban that will now be due in April.
Okay.
Bicentennial, we may be able to delete that if you want, because we have a $75,000 earmark grant from the state, I don't know that we need to appropriate any money from the town to fund the bicentennial, given the $75,000.
Not at this time, if we do, we could do it next year.
Okay. Opioid settlement, there's going to be two articles, one to appropriate money for this fiscal year based on what we're receiving from the opioid settlements, the other would set up an enterprise fund, so that the money can be separated from the general fund. Else, if we don't have that, it just goes into the big Peggy Bank, and doesn't, we want to segregate it, because under the state, the settlements, all this money needs to be specifically used for these purposes, for remediation, for prevention and such, and so we want to make sure that every dollar that we're getting from the opioid settlement is going to those purposes. We need to change the EB CAM money coming in from a revolving fund to an enterprise fund, so that all the Comcast receipts that we receive each year, the quarterly large amounts, the capital funding and everything else, goes into the enterprise fund rather than a revolving fund, so it operates sort of like as a utility, and that we make sure that if we're going to be budgeting for everything, for both capital and operating, that we base it on the money that we'll be receiving, so that we don't end up in a situation unless the town says otherwise, that the property taxes are subsidizing this, it should just, the purpose would be just that the Comcast receipts would cover the costs of EB CAM. We may want to skip over this, because I suspect it's going to be a lot of discussion, that this is something I, Sue Patrick had been talking to me about. Under the town's bylaws, if you have more than a certain number of dogs, even if you're not breeding them, you need a kennel license, which requires a special permit. Now, that may be what the town wants, I'm not sure of that, but there's two areas that if we wanted to do anything about that, we would change, one is in the dog bylaws themselves, so that we would further define, you know, call it a regular kennel in the sense of, I simply have a lot of dogs, I don't breed them, I don't sell them, I don't board them, I don't kennel them, or anything, they're my dogs, I just happen to have a lot of dogs, any more than I have a lot of cats. There is a hobby kennel that we have right now, that allows for up to 10 dogs, and you can breed them up to no more than three litters a year. I don't know if that's per dog, I assume it's not per dog, because you're not going to get three litters per year for a dog, but you're going to have three litters in this hobby kennel per year. And then there's the commercial kennel, which allows you to board kennel dogs to then commercially breed them and such. I know Sue is aware of a number of households that have more than three dogs, which I believe is the limit, at four, you need the kennel license, which requires this, but again, I don't know, here in East Bridgewater, is that, is that on purpose, in the sense of, simply because someone has a lot of dogs, you're going to need to get a public hearing, and you're going to need a special permit through zoning or not?
I know it's been in effect for many, many years, we've never done anything with them.
I'd be in favor of considering it, though, I've had, I've had people I know personally that have been impacted by the cost of having a kennel license when they just had four dogs, you know, if there's no, if there's a way to sort of differentiate between...
Yeah, that's the whole thing, right?
The different types, and set the fees accordingly, that seems like a good idea.
We would need to change zoning, we may be out of time to do that, because notification probably...
But definitely...
You have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, there's a process, but it's a good idea.
Let's see, acceptance of chapter 40, section 22F, which there's, this is a not-well-known statute, but it does allow specifically boards and committees and departments to set fees. It sounds weird, because we've been doing it all along, but that's a statute, you need to prove to legally do all what we've been doing. I went through the statutes that we've accepted, and it's not on the list, so I'd like to make sure that we're doing it right.
Sounds like some house... I don't think my taxes anymore, it's illegal.
To articles, one dealing with, both of them dealing with the betterments in the sewer system, and liens, and things like that, we would accept Mass General laws, chapter 83, sections 15C, 15D, 16A, 16G, and 23, and then a separate article accepting chapter 80, section 13B, and this is all tied into talking with Chris Kenny, and with Fran and Steve at Western Sampson about, if we're going to be operating the sanitary sewer district, that we need to have these in place to make sure that we're able to operate financially properly and deal with the folks who are going to be participating and using this sewer system. Energy efficiency stabilization fund, this is something I talked to Brian about, in that he would like to make sure that any energy incentives that we get back from the projects that we're doing, go back into a separate fund, then to fund new energy incentive, you know, efficiency projects. The, we have an article to rescind previous bonding authorizations, that we no longer need either the amounts were more than what we needed originally, or the original amounts are more than what we actually bonded, or the purposes that we bonded for no longer apply, and it's helpful to clean those off the books, bonding agencies, everybody else will look, okay, what if you authorize the bond, what's the potential for you to go out and borrow more and more money, and they like having those cleaned out, if you're not going to intend to borrow that money, to take them off the books. Precise Engineering, we're talking about the brownfield, we're, because we're the owner of it, we have to pay a registration fee every year, and there's no, there was no money in the budget, I think I worked with DPW with John Haynes, but I want to replenish the amount, it's about $4,000, that we have to repay to the state already, but we need to replenish his DPW account to cover that, and we'll have to, in future years, as long as we still own Precise Engineering, that we're going to have to cover that registration fee. Let's see, we're going to, we've done this periodically, we're moving money back into the capital stabilization fund, for the tower truck will be the third of the five payments from the ambulance fund. We have then also from the fire chief, various specific appropriation for new mannequins for use by the emergency personnel, and then also transfers from line items within the fire department, so staying within the budget, but moving the money around, based, partially based on the federal grant that we're getting for hiring the new firefighters, and then still be able to move the money around in connection with that. I talked to Patrick about this, I think what the planning board would like to do is shorten the length of time when we can revoke a permit based on the taxes. Right now, the bylaw says that we have to wait a full year. If someone owes taxes more than a year old, or other fines, then we have to wait a year before we go through a revocation or a non-renewal for a license or permit. I need to talk to Patrick and try to Roy and say, well, then what, how many, how long do you want, do you want six months, three months, because it would require a change in the bylaw, but that's on the warrant. We have the, the big part, half the warrant is the wetlands bylaw. We had brought this up back in May, wasn't ready for prime time, the conservation commission's done more work with it, and it's ready to go. They have two alternatives, one is the full revamp of the bylaw, if for some reason, we don't want to move forward with that, then there's a separate article to change the fee structure at least, so it's brought up to date, and I believe I've covered everything.
How many articles?
I've got 23, there might be one or two one way or the other, based on what...
We have to be annual.
We're taking, or putting up.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, we need to make a motion to accept those, or to close it?
Motion to accept the special town meeting warrants as presented by Mr. Seerick.
Second.
All right, motion's made second, and further discussion? Discussion? Discussion?
Discussion.
All right, seems getting late. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have one more action item, Mr. Seerick?
Mm-hmm.
We have a couple of things under discussion.
I have one more action.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from the finance committee to appoint Karen Gilman as a finance committee member effective October 17, 2022, to June 30, 2025.
Second.
Need second, discussion? Just welcome.
Thank you, Karen.
Yep, Karen on board.
Bring a couple of friends with you next meeting.
Get a full room. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is that it?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Charlie?
I don't want to hold this up more than I need to, but a few updates here. We got an announcement from Plymouth County that the ambulance application has been approved.
And it was much rejoicing.
It was, should have been, it was, on our end, it was fairly straightforward, they're taking a very long time in going through applications. taking a very long time in going through applications, but that's a good piece of news that instead of using our own money at this end, we'll be able to use Plymouth County. In connection with that, and I've already ran the ARPA advisory committee about this, I think it might be prudent, just in terms of moving the gears along, to have the town submit the other twenty-seven applications, have to Plymouth, not for funding, but to say, have them make the determination whether these are eligible for Plymouth County funds. The reason is that if they're not, and we want to move forward, then we know that we're limited just to our own money. And given how long the ambulance one took, which was really a very straightforward application, because it's, I mean, it's very clear in the final rule that equipment such as an ambulance is going to qualify under the health and safety provisions, that, you know, I'd rather not have the ARPA committee, you know, whether it's a couple of months from now, or whatever, make a recommendation to you, you then make a decision pending Plymouth County saying yes, to say yes to an application, that we then sit for who knows how much longer, and everybody has to wait, the folks who apply don't know whether they're getting money or anything like that. This way, we're not asking Plymouth County for the funds, unlike with the ambulance, where we already, we spent the money upfront, but we're asking, if we actually ask for the money, would you say yes? It's the same information, that doesn't change, but they would say whether a project is eligible or not. I mean, I can wait for the committee to meet again, because I've said to them, that's my advice to you. Obviously, if you direct me and Melanie to send them, we'll do that also.
No, I think that's a great idea. Get, get it down to them now. You're right, we were, it took so long to get the approval on the ambulance.
Like, get it approved for a mortgage.
Yep.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, makes sense.
Halloween hours, we, Monday, two weeks from now is Halloween. Hasn't happened that way since twenty-sixteen, won't happen again until twenty-thirty-three, in which case I don't plan on being used for that.
It's only your problem.
There's no past practice about closing the town hall early because of that. Now, there are a few complications if the, if the board did. One, we have early voting that night, but I've talked to Sue about that, her election workers are going to be staffing the early voting, she doesn't need the staff in her office to be here, and she'll just take whatever time she wants to take off, because she's an elected official. Deadline for property taxes is November first, but we have the lockbox out front, so if somebody wants to drop off a payment, you know, even if the building's not open, they can drop it off there, and that, that's fine. We do have, obviously, clerical and administrative employees in other buildings, and they should receive the same benefit, in the sense of, in essence, we're giving a, call it a half-holiday day, three and a half hours. If someone's working at the council on aging, not entirely, they should receive the same benefit as, especially where we're dealing with union members and saying, to some of you, you can go home, but others, you can't. It would be something I would need to make sure of with Nancy and with John, to, you know, how they would work it. But the idea would be that everybody would be able to go home early, one way or the other, to celebrate with their families, however they're celebrating, or not. Maybe they, maybe they turn all the lights off and say they're not home.
Can't be themselves.
Something wrong with that?
And the library, right? The library's open till eight o'clock on Mondays?
I'd have to check, yeah.
Yep, they are. I would, if we need a motion, I'd make a motion that we close town hall at four-thirty on Halloween, and for all other departments, that they would be entitled to three and a half hours off their schedule.
You want to limit it to taking the time off on Halloween?
During that week.
During that week, okay.
Second. That sounds good.
Yep, motion made seconded, and further discussion? I think it makes sense. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
MBTA communities update. If you remember, several months ago, I officially had a discussion with you all, and then was able to submit, saying, hi, I had a discussion with the Boris Leckman about the MBTA community zoning statute. So we remained eligible, and which, you know, is helpful when we're applying for various state grants. So a new deadline's coming up, that'll be in January, at the end of January, that we now have to say, here's what our certification process is going to be. Doesn't mean we're going to do this, in the sense of, it doesn't mean that town, that we know town meeting is going to eventually pass a zoning bylaw, but we've got a process in place that would allow for that to happen. What we do, the, we have to finish the work by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, in that sending it in would allow us more, would allow us time to do it, but also allow us to remain eligible for the various grants that we may still want to be applying for. I don't know whether you want me to move forward with that, in terms of, again, it makes no guarantees, it's simply, you know, for instance, there's a timetable, when are you going to have, you know, public outreach? When are you going to have discussions with the planning board? When are you going to think you might go to town meeting? It doesn't have to be this May, it could be next fall, it could be May of twenty-twenty-four. If you remember what it is, basically, we're going to have to find fifty acres of buildable property that would be zoned by right to allow up to fifteen, more than fifteen units of housing per acre, so seven hundred and fifty new units of housing. It doesn't mean that it's vacant land, but it can't be wetlands, it can't be, I believe now, I've seen some of the provisions, we couldn't take the town hall and school property and say, here's our fifty acres, oh, by the way, we're never going to, you know, sell it or anything like that. But it could be subdivisions that have already been built, and we simply say, okay, these fifty acres, if somebody wants to buy all the land, take all the houses down, and rebuild, they can do that, it's unlikely, you know, that that sort of thing would happen. But what it does is, putting in for the certification process allows us to remain eligible. And there may be projects we have in the next couple of years, where we want to go after further funding, just as we did with the one-stop-for-growth program.
I think we should just go ahead and move along with the certification process, and see where it happens to.
Yeah, I agree, I think, you know, we're just, it's inevitable, right?
Well, it's not inevitable, I, I mean, I know when initially I talked with the board, and I talked with Roy about this months ago, there was not a lot of enthusiasm for moving forward, for actually trying to get the town to do this, but at the same time, even if the town ends up not wanting to do this, I want the town to remain eligible for the funding as long as possible.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, I'll move, I'll get that moving along. We already dealt with the sergeant's contract, residences at Meadowbrook, meaning the celebrity property. Today, we got notification from the state that the application for the local initiative program has been approved, but that doesn't do much aside from the state now has given the green light for celebrity to come back to the town, to the zoning board of appeals, and apply for a comprehensive permit. So the ball's now back in his court, in terms of the permitting process. He'll have to file the application, which is very much like the application he filed with the state, he doesn't have to do a lot of work, gather a lot of new information, but ZBA would then have a series of hearings, it's usually three, four months, something on that order. I mean, some of them go for years, but I'm going to assume so that even to get an approval for the chapter forty-B will be spring, would be my guess, because it's already October, you'd have to put out the application in, they have, you know, then they can start to have hearings, but not immediately. They do get help from the state, they get technical assistance, it's like ten thousand dollars worth of technical assistance, they get to hire somebody to advise them to work through this process, they also, the developer needs to provide funding for technical review of the application, everything like that, so they're not bereft of resources if the application comes through. But there's no action for the town to take right now. The letter was addressed both to the board and to, I, I, I can't remember what, JSC Holdings, I think it is, which is the owner of records, so we'll see what we get back from them, but at least that's been moved along. You do have a request from Congressman Lynch to speak at the special town meeting, given that will be after the election, I'm not worried, you know, if it was before the election, I'd say, ah, you have to let everybody in, but after the election, unless the board sees a problem.
No, he, he
No, he's come before.
Yep, okay. Just wanted to say that I'm going to welcome Sergeant Michael McLaughlin, he's going to be speaking at the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association meeting in Bridgewater on Thursday. We're going to be covering a number of different topics regarding public safety, he will be speaking about his experience with the Alice and Asher programs, which are active shooter training and prevention and such. So my thanks to the sergeant and Chief O'Brien for making this a reality. And then last thing is my, our payroll. The treasure collector's office, town accountant's office, have been working with the school about rescheduling payroll, so that gives them more time to do it correctly and get everything in. They're going to be bringing the payroll in on Tuesday each week, we just need someone from the board to be designated as the person to come in and sign it officially, and we can have just one person do that, we don't need all three signatures for that to happen. So if the board would designate somebody, and I guess an alternate would be helpful also.
I'll be the alternate.
I'll be at work.
I guess that leaves me, I'll be there.
Thank you, okay.
And you'll be here anyway.
Can I cross people off?
Do you have a little list, they won't be missed? Is that what you're telling me?
No. Never say that. Okay.
I'm good.
Good, thank you, Charlie. Rebecca?
No. Thank God. I know, I was going to make a little joke that I had, it's like
Right.
Well!
Carol, you forgot that, everything you're not holding right there.
Board discussions.
Just to remind it on October twenty-ninth, the field of flags, we have the drug take-back and shredding down the community center. The field of flags is nine, and the shredding and drug take-back is ten to one. Have a nice Halloween.
The only thing I got is an agreement, we put together
We'll keep going, oh.
There we go. So we've got our first agreement, that we're close to getting together with Equity, which is the owner of Compass and Hardhanks. So I'd like, Charlie, if you could, let the David and Carol take a look at that, before we forward it on to them, so that if they have any questions, it's not real long, it's really formulated along the same lines as what we did over here on routine.
Will it be as exciting as the stormwater regulations?
That's, well, it's going to
Well, it involves lots and lots of money.
Yes, it does involve a lot of money.
Okay, all right, well, then that's exciting.
There's a lot of money.
Can Carol walk up?
Yeah, it is, so, it's, it's fairly short, I mean, a few pages, but like I said, it's really just wanted you to understand, not understand, but take a look at it anyways, and before we send it out to them, and, you know, see what, what their thoughts about it are. You know, we're hoping to lock these, this, this first agreement down, we've got three agreements we'll be working on, this would be the first, and then, of course, Rhino Capital, who just sold the Gray Star, that's the warehousing building that used to be on the Speedway location, so we'll be talking to them next, and then, of course, Rob, as he goes through his, his process.
Coming right along.
Yep, so we'll have Charlie send that out to you tomorrow, and take a look, and we hope to get these, this out to them by the end of the week. That's it.
And Rebecca did remind me, I didn't get to the last page. So the question had come up about whether the town has any type of policy for honoring people associated with the town, not necessarily town government, but with East Bridgewater, you know, honorary days, you know, you just did a proclamation, for instance, for family court month, whether you do something similar for residents, I mean, I can't imagine, you know, doing it for someone who's, was doing, not, again, it doesn't have to be with the town government, it could be, you know, somebody, a volunteer, but, you know, probably, you know, whether it's twenty-five years, or forty years, or fifty years, or something, and saying, we want to honor Mary or Joe, we don't even necessarily give a plaque, it might be, you know, a paper, you know, proclamation or something, honoring them. But I don't know whether the board has any sort of policy, whether they would want to think about doing something like that.
We have given, I know people over the years, just a proclamation letter for twenty-five years or more, and that usually comes from whatever employer that they work for, we've done that recently, for two or three people in the same organization. It's been brought up before about proclamation days and stuff like that, we've never done that. We, I said, we've done to individuals,
Right.
Thank you, they can come in and thank you for your service and all that stuff, but I think if we start with days, we're going to have something every day of the week.
That, that would be my concern, too.
They call it a day of, for Joe Smith or something?
Yes, Joe Smith Day in East Bridgewater, because Joe is Yeah, because Joe has done these things for the last two, five years, or last fifty years, or whatever.
I don't remember ever doing anything.
They say we give Joe a proclamation, but we don't call it Joe Smith Day.
Yeah, I give him a nice
Not a day.
No shade to Joe Smith. Sure he's a great guy.
I know Joe.
I do, too.
No, I think, yeah, like you said, a write-up
They have to give one to Tommy, too.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we can
Okay.
It's a paper like we've done in the past.
Yeah.
That's right.
Something, yeah, for sure.
We did it for Denise Bouchard, right, for her, all the years, the busy bee.
Yeah. We've done it for three people over at the, it's long.
Yeah.
All right, motion to which, Chairman, to which.
Oh, God, this meeting.
Motion's been made, second?
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Have a great Halloween, be safe, folks.
Yeah, joke for the little trick.